That's all we got for you.
Well, can I tell a little story first? And most of you know Bob Lloyd, Lloyd's Collision here in Santee. He and John Morley were pretty good buddies also. And Bob approached me one day and says, you know, I think I'd like to get more involved in Santee and what's going on and things of that nature. And so I said, is there anything I can be involved with? And of course, I had been working with Justin when he was a brand new guy here with Relay for Life. And Relay for Life was a big fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. And so one thing leads to another, and I told him, let's get involved in this Relay for Life thing. And John Morley said, well, I'm not involved in any of that. But I'm sure he would be interested in doing something similar. And I said, yes, sir. I'm sure he would be interested in doing something similar. And he said, yes, sir. I'm sure he would be interested in doing something similar. And I said, yes, sir. I'm sure he would be interested in doing something similar. And I said, yes, sir. Thanks, Eric. You know, Eric is a great example of our employees here. You can call on them at any time to fill in where we need to be having someone to fill in. And you know, every member of the staff does the same thing. And I know that I can only really speak for myself, but I'd like to also say that on behalf of the council, we all appreciate everything that you do for us every day, every one of our employees. So thank you. How about if we get on with the show now? So tonight, we're going to have a little bit of fun here in the beginning. We're going to do a San Diego Regional Fire and Emergency Services Foundation and San Diego River Conservancy unveiling for a new fire brush rig. And I think, Justin, you're going to handle that, aren't you?
Do it. Well, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of the city of Santee. If you don't mind, Joan and Julie and Frank, would you mind coming up here? Come right up here. On your way in, hopefully you had a chance to see our beautiful new fire apparatus. We call that a Type III brush rig. And we use those for firefighting in our wildland urban interface areas or brush, as we'd call it. And in the end of 2023, Joan and Frank reached out to me and they said, hey, we have this grant that you are eligible for, and you're one of the few agencies that's eligible for this because of where geographic location. And would you be interested in partnering to purchase possibly a brush rig? And we said, absolutely. And so we proposed this to council. And that apparatus out there costs over $600,000. And we had to make the pitch to council of, hey, we have this opportunity to be able to get this apparatus for $600,000, but it will only cost us about $200,000 because the generosity of the San Diego Regional Fire and Emergency Services Foundation, also called the Fire Foundation, and the San Diego River Conservancy were willing to pick up over $400,000 of the price tag. And so from grant funding from them, we were able to make an order for that apparatus and actually get it to the city of Santee in almost less than a year, which is unheard of because the production of fire engines these days is 36 to 48-plus months. So to go from concept, support from the council, support from these two amazing organizations, to have that apparatus now in our fleet is an incredible, incredible blessing for us. Since we've been around since 1955, we have never had more than one Type III brush apparatus that you see out there. And so what that means is when we offer that apparatus to the state of California in our mutual aid system, which we do a lot, that means that we don't have that same type of engine here to fight fires. And as all of our citizens are aware, we have quite a few fires, especially in that San Diego River corridor. So with your support, we now are guaranteed to have that type of apparatus in our city at all times, even when there's fires burning up and down the state of California. Now, in addition, the Fire Foundation also helped us purchase over $60,000 worth of radios, which that's a lot of radios, by the way. And we only had to pay for 10% of it. So incredible support from the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation and also the San Diego River Conservancy. We thank you both for helping us in achieving our mission. And on behalf of the city of Santee, we have these special certificates of recognition. And Mr. Mayor, are you okay if they say a few words?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll hand it over to Frank.
I guess I'm the spokesperson. But the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation was formed 35 years ago to help make San Diego the safest county in the nation. That's our goal. And the only way we can do that is when all the fire departments work together collectively to attack all fires that start as soon as we can, keep them as small as we can. And as the chief just said, when your engine's out helping somebody else, what's left in your own town to help you? And that's what we're providing the engine for, so there is continuous assistance available if a fire were to break out in this area. So we're very pleased between the two grants to provide the city almost a half million dollars, or 167,000 to be exact, to live up to our mission and to help make everybody in this community safer. And we could not have done it without the River Conservancy. They support everything that's in their watershed, all the way from Julian down through here out to the ocean. And through a grant that we wrote, we got the funding and were able to do this. So chief, enjoy the use of the truck and keep everybody here safe.
God bless you all for doing this for us. This is an amazing thing for our city. It's amazing thing for our region. And I just, how awesome is it that they're, that we're able to be blessed with this? That just, thank you, thank you guys so very, very much for all your hard work in bringing this together for us.
One good thing is that we put the best trained people on that brand-new rig.
Amen.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Frank. Our next item is celebrating John Morley. You're going to hear a little bit about John and the documents that we wrote up. Then we'll, I'm going to go down with Councilmember Hall, and then we'll share just a couple little stories I'm sure that you may get a kick out of. One good thing is that we put the best trained people on that brand-new rig.
Amen.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Frank.
Amen. So one good thing is that we put the best trained people on that brand-new rig.
Amen.
We're going to have Christopher George here also from Joel Anderson's office. He has a little something for the family also. And Ron, you're going to lead this off. Oh, actually, we're going to have Christopher go first.
Yeah, this is, this is Chris George. It's Joel Anderson's office. And I'm going to, do you want the mic or do you want me to just hold it?
Thank you. So it is with a deep sense of loss and gratitude that we gather here today to honor the life of John Dean Morley. John was a devoted husband, father, and brother, and a dedicated member of the Santee community. Throughout his life, he demonstrated resilience, perseverance, and a strong commitment to both family and the community. He was not only a successful entrepreneur, but a dedicated community leader. As I'm sure you're all aware, he co-owned Pac Mail of Santee and later founded Morley and Sons Signs with his son Cory, and showcasing his strong work ethic and entrepreneurial spirit. Beyond his business ventures, he served as president of the Santee Chamber of Commerce, board member for the Santee Parks and Recreation, founding member and chairman of the First Santee Street Fair, a member of the Rotary Club, and he contributed to many other community organizations. John Morley's lifelong commitment to service and his passion for uplifting those around him have left an enduring mark on Santee and San Diego County as a whole. He was definitively a pillar of the community. I will now read the last paragraph of the resolution. Be it proclaimed that I, Supervisor Joel Anderson, express my dearest sympathy at the passing of John D. Morley, and by this resolution memorialize him for a lifetime of contributions to San Diego County.
Well, he read most of what I was going to say. But here, yeah, we'll come up and work on stories. Well, John Morley, if you know, is, we worked together on this, I think Rob was part of this a lot of times too, Santee Street Fair, the Santee Santas, Santee Rotary Club, and half a dozen other things that, everything, Relay for Life, I, yeah, I was dragged up there for Relay for Life a few times myself. And it was, it was a lot of fun. And he was a great guy. For those that don't know him, probably know the guy on the crutches. And he was relentless. We're all, you know, he's sitting there all day long. He would work six in the morning to midnight on the Concert Lakes. Concert Lakes was his baby. He ran it. And it was unbelievable, just all that he did for this community. The Rotary Club, he was Rotaryarian of the Year. He was a chamber president. He was, I think, a chamber president of the year. And so he was always involved and always willing to say yes, which I'm sure made Brenda happy. The one, one quick story I have, and again, when I say he worked 12-hour days, he did. He would work those two, the three or four days before. He was the best negotiator we ever see, saw when he would, he would set up the bands because he would go to the music, they would go listen to him before he did. And he would literally talk the band. The band would quote him $10,000. And by the time they were through negotiating, they'd be almost paying him to do it. So he would be down to about $2,000. And he'd just say, all the, all your exposure and all these great things you're going to get. And he would save the Rotary Club or the Street Fair. He, it was his idea to do the car shows. I think a lot of you might remember the car shows way back when. And he was always, that was his baby. He was, he ran it. And the same thing did in the morning was the, in the spring was the, the Street Fair, and the fall was a car show. So he did. So what I'd like to do is give you this proclamation, and I'll give it to both of you. This is for the city of San Diego, Santee, John, are you sure this is your? The mayor of Santee and on behalf of the council proclaim March 27th as John Morley Day. And what we do is, so forever it'll be John Morley Day. And what we do is, we always make it the next day so that way you, you have a full day.
Well, can I, can I tell a little story first? And most of you know Bob Lloyd, Lloyd's Collision here in Santee. He and John Morley were pretty good buddies also. And Bob approached me one day and says, you know, I think I'd like to get more involved in Santee and what's going on and things of that nature. And so I said, mayor, or actually, I was councilman at the time, says, is there anything I can involve with? And of course, I had been working with Justin when he was a brand-new guy here with the Relay for Life, remember those days? And Relay for Life was a big fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. And so one thing leads to another, and I told him, I said, let's get involved in this Relay for Life thing. And lo and behold, who got to be the next president of the program? John Morley. And John never forgave me because, because I'm the, if I hadn't have talked to Bob, he would have never been saddled with that. And he did a great job, but it was really time-consuming and but we, and we did have a lot of fun. But the story he always says is that, you know, be careful who you ask to do something for. And I said, no, be careful who you are associating with that's willing to volunteer you to do something. And we went on for many years doing that program. We raised a lot of money for the American Cancer Society. He was very good at that. Firefighters, I remember one year they raised about oh, 15, $20,000 themselves just for that. And so, which kind of took them out of the competition after that because nobody could compete.
And most of you know Bob Lloyd, Lloyd's Collision here in Santee. He and John Morley were pretty good buddies also. And Bob approached me one day and says, you know, I, I think I'd like to get more involved in Santee and what's going on and things of that nature. And so I said, Mayor, or actually, I was Councilman at the time, says, is there anything I can involve with? And of course, I had been working with Justin when he was a brand new guy here with the Relay for Life. Remember those days? And Relay for Life was a big fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. And so one thing leads to another. And I told him, I said, let's get involved in this Relay for Life thing. And lo and behold, who got to be the next president of the program? John Morley. And John never forgave me because, because I'm the, if I hadn't have talked to Bob, he would have never been saddled with that. And he did a great job, but it was really time consuming and but we, and we did have a lot of fun. But the story he always says is that, you know, be careful who you ask to do something for. And I said, no, be careful who you are associating with that's willing to volunteer you to do something. And we went on for many years doing that program. We raised a lot of money for the American Cancer Society. He was very good at that. Firefighters, I remember one year they raised about oh, 15, $20,000 themselves just for that. And so, which kind of took them out of the competition after that because nobody could compete with that, of course. But who could compete with firefighters except deputy sheriffs, right? So, so anyways, that's, that's just a really quick little story that I remember a lot about him and all the other little things that he did throughout the community, throughout so many years, until he decided one day to retire. And we're like, what is that? What is retirement? So that's, that's just my little story about John, I thought.
Dustin, do you want to say anything about Santee Santas and John? I know you guys had.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that was actually one of my first exposures to Johns when I would, we were both on the board for Santee Santas back in, I don't know, 14, 15 years ago, something like that. And like I said, Councilman Hall mentioned, you know, numerous things that we all helped out with. The Relay for Life obviously did that, the Concert of the Lakes, setting things up. There's many of the things that, that we did during our time of helping out in our community. And for all of us, you know, it's our service above self and being a part of our community. So I do have very fond memories of working with John and multiple occasions and stuff. So, so another somber day.
It was, Rob was one of the founding members of the Street Fair too.
It was my idea. What are you talking about? You guys all said I couldn't do it. You guys all said I couldn't do it and I brought it to Santee. Anyways, yes, John, actually, John took it over after, took over all the entertainment the year after I, after I stepped away because I got elected here, God bless it. But he took over the entertainment and did a really good job. And that's what led him probably to being so good at, at finding wonderful talent for the concerts at the lakes that, that you guys did every single year. And that was always a really big event for the City of Santee and the only time that you could have live music at the lakes at the time. So it was a really big deal. So he did a really good job at always finding just high caliber, high quality talent to be there and, and just bring, to, to bring people together in the City of Santee. And he had a good talent for that.
Yes, so John and I met and, you know, talking about a life dedicated to service, that's definitely what I think about when I think about John. I was the Park Director at Santee Lakes and John was on the Santee Lakes Foundation. And, you know, his talent for finding the most amazing bands, I remember the, I mean, he had three bands. One was a Heart cover band that was amazing and then the Eagles cover band, which I'm like, they just get better. So he definitely had a knack for that. But unrelated to one of his events, I, he knew what events were happening at Santee Lakes. And I really wanted to show Smokey and the Bandit. And he's like, I can get you the Trans Am and he did. So that's kind of person John was.
He had the Batmobile there. He's had so many different cars and things like that. The car shows were just amazing. The one story I was going to tell real quick was the day the Concert Lakes got rained out. And it was, we had to actually call it. We were going to, we were holding off to the last minute, waiting to see if the rain went. And a lot of you in here remember that, but it was unbelievable. It's July, I think, 29th or something like that. Never rains. He was looking at the dates, it never rains. Well, it was pouring. We must've got an inch of rain. Anyway, so automatically everybody's money that paid by credit card went back. So he went back to try and, the money we had collected in cash, he went back and, and worked with the people and was trying to give it back to them. And just about everybody said, no, keep it. So we got completely rained out. There is no Concert Lakes and we made $7,000 for Rotary on that day. So he has just been fantastic. Do you have anything you want to add or do you have anything you want to add? Yeah, because you both knew him real well too.
Yeah, I miss seeing him here at Council.
Hello.
Christine Costa, Waste Management.
He would always, he would always include us on the things that are going on in the community. He always opened the door and said, hey, baby, where's your sister? Because he thought we were sisters. And we, we definitely are so grateful for our time with him and for you guys, you know, sharing him with us. He was truly instrumental in our careers here in Santee and we're grateful.
Christine Dare from the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, so I onboarded into the Chamber, I think, back in 2014. So you guys were well underway with Street Fair at that time. But I feel like I got to come into the Chamber of Commerce during a time where I was learning and growing from so many people. And he was just a big part of that. And he took a lot of pride in all of the work that he did. It was the car shows, it was the Street Fair, and it was everything in between that kind of always overlapped with the Chamber, which was really neat. So I feel like it was just a really big time in my life where I was trying to absorb as much as possible from the people around me and really learned a lot about what it meant to kind of accelerate into that next level of giving back to your community. And he was just a really stellar example of that. So we thank you for sharing him with us.
You know, Ron, I really wish you hadn't have brought up that refund thing because my wife's still wanting to know where that refund is.
I just want to say thank you so much for honoring John. He would be absolutely embarrassed but thrilled at the same time. He was very humble about it. But as a lot of you know, he, he was stricken with polio mere months before the vaccine came out. But he was absolutely inspirational because he never said no. He never found any challenge that he couldn't do. If somebody called him on the phone and said, we need you to be part of this, he said, when do you want me there? He never said no to anything. Oftentimes I'd be coming home from work and he'd be going out the door and I'd, I'd say, where are you going now? I'm going to the meeting for this or that. And I'm like, when did you become part of that? Oh, they gave me a call. And the next thing I know, he'd be off on that. And he had five, six, seven things going on at one time. And it was all volunteer. He never got paid a penny for any of it, but it didn't matter to him because it came from his heart. And when he retired, he was very sad. But unfortunately, he got too sick and cancer did take his life. But truly inspirational to me and I, I was blessed to be his wife. Thank you so much.
We oftentimes think of these little presentations as very sad. But you know what? They're actually very happy because it's somebody that we really like, somebody that we wanted to, you know, be with every chance we had to. And so I'm calling this a good night for us, a good night for the family. And as a matter of fact, we're going to also adjourn the meeting in his memory. All right then. You know, we have another presentation. I don't think it's going to be nearly as much of a tearjerker. But we're going to find out about some waste management things. And so here, doing what she does best is Christine Costa, talking trash.
It's not easy to go after that, but I'm going to give it my best here. Okay, so Heather, this one? Help a sister out.
Good thing it's not a trash can.
No kidding. I know, I could do it if it was. All right, awesome. Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Minto, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to present our annual report. We'll be reviewing our key achievements, our education and outreach efforts, our community partnerships, and provide you with a legislative update on things that are coming down the pike and will affect your city and how we recycle. This report highlights the hard work, dedication and collaboration of our staff, city staff and our community, all of whom have contributed to the success of the city's programs and services. And the goal is to just hope that we provide you with a clear picture of our achievements and efforts in 2024. So in 2024, we proudly serviced, served 13,370 residential customers, which are single-family homes, condos, HOA and mobile home communities. We provided services to 773 commercial customers and 37 permanent roll-offs, different businesses that use the larger containers for their businesses. We operate 17 residential trash routes, 16 residential recycling routes and two residential organics routes, Monday through Friday. We also manage four commercial trash routes, two recycle routes and one commercial organics routes, Monday through Saturday. Last year, we helped combat illegal dumping by collecting 12,478 bulk item pickups for residents and commercial customers across the city. So in total, in 2024, we collected 48,000 tons of material from the City of Santee. 72% of that material was MSW, which we refer to as Metropolitan Solid Waste, AKA Trash. 14% was recycling and then 14% was organics. The organics does go to a composting facility where it's turned into end products such as mulch, soil amendments and soil additives. Quick note about our organics program. So we have been collecting it, bringing it to our transfer station and then transporting it to Salome, Arizona. Because when this mandate SB 1383 was enacted, there was no regional solution here in San Diego County. So we got the approval to bring it back to our facility and we transload it to Arizona. However, last year, I'm proud to report that we purchased a company called Agri Service and they have composting facilities in Oceanside and then in Otai. And so we are slowly diverting that material from Arizona down to Otai. So we're keeping it all here in San Diego County and creating that compost byproduct right down in the South Bay. So if you ever want to tour and see what happens to the food organics waste that we collect, let me know. It's really interesting. So some of the products, as I mentioned, are soil amendments, mulch and landscape products. And these improve soil structure, enhance nutrient content. They break down organic matter quicker and they're optimizing conditions for specific plants to ensure healthy growth. They also prevent weed and soil erosion. And then decorative landscape just looks better, right? Nice mulch in your gardens and in your businesses. So that's an offering that we also have. Eventually, we'll have the part of the facility open where residents can come to our facility and pick up mulch and compost if they want to. So more to come on that this year. In the summer of 2024, in partnership with the city, we proudly unveiled the first electric collection truck right here in Santee. It was the first one in San Diego County. It's been on the route for seven, eight months now. And I'm proud to report that it is operated by our only female driver. Take note, man. No, I'm just kidding. She's, she's out in Santee collecting that waste on the electric vehicle. This milestone reflects our commitment to being a leader in municipal sustainability and advancing innovative solutions that benefit both the community and our environment. Let's see here. So this picture right here is the collection truck. We did a ribbon cutting out here in the parking lot. It has, it's powered by a 650 volt battery and it has the capability of running nine to 12 hours. It's an absolute zero emissions truck. It's pretty cool. We're really excited. And I'm proud to report that in April, the City of Santee will be receiving five more. So you're going to have six electric vehicles operating in the Santee city, which is the most that's in San Diego County now. So we're super excited about that. Part of our contract requires public education and outreach to inform residents and businesses about recycling mandates. And we're dedicated to promoting sustainability through our comprehensive outreach activities aimed at reducing contamination and increasing waste diversion. Our efforts are designed to engage and educate the community on proper recycling and waste management practices, ensuring that more materials are diverted from the landfill and into the recycling stream. Here's some examples on the screen here. But in 2024, we did four quarterly residential newsletters. Those go out with every quarterly invoice. The residents receive a copy of the newsletter. You can see it's in the middle here. And we collaborate with the Public Services Team, Community Services Department and Marketing to include things, you know, like the special events that are coming in the City of Santee and the concert schedule. So all the residents have the concert schedule. They'll be getting it with the next invoice so they have it ahead of time and they can prepare to spend the summers with all of us out at the concerts. So it's pretty exciting. We also do social media assets that you'll see on the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. Proud to report, we produced the eighth episode of Trash Talk. It's an informative series that addresses common waste management questions and provides helpful recycling tips. We conducted facility tours at our Alcohoan Transfer Station where we have residents and Girl Scout troops or maybe classrooms that come and we show them exactly where they're recycling and their organics end up and how, where it goes from there. We're continuing to do our recycling and organics recycling presentations through HOAs, apartment complexes. Any business that needs our help, we have a technical team that can assist with anything that they need. And then, of course, our community events. We hosted and participated in numerous community events throughout the year. We did the holiday lighting. That's our favorite. We go out there and we bring our education and outreach and we converse with the residents and answer any questions that they have. And we're excited to be a partner on that as well. So through these outreach efforts, we are, it's part of our ongoing commitment to create a cleaner, more sustainable environment by empowering our residents with the knowledge and tools that they need to properly manage their waste while making a positive impact in the community. And speaking of community partnerships, we place great importance on being responsible community stewards. We believe that supporting local initiatives are essential to fostering a well-rounded and thriving community. In 2024, we made financial contributions of over $83,000. That's in excess of our contractual obligations to the city. These financial contributions help support the Fourth of July Celebration, which we're excited to do again this year, holiday lighting, as well as support to local organizations, including the Santee Lakeside Rotary, the Santee Chamber of Commerce, Santee Santas, the Kowanas, Santee Pop Warner and many more. In addition to our financial contributions, we also provided an additional $30,000 in in-kind services to local organizations that needed trash services during their, their events. We're proud of our community partnerships and you can count on us to continue supporting them. Also in 2004, we collaborated with the city's Public Services Team and hosted two community cleanup and shred events. These vital, these events play a vital role in helping to reduce litter and promote environmental sustainability within our city. Through our collective efforts, we successfully collected 36 tons of debris over two Saturdays, one in April, one in September. And we diverted 45% of those materials from the landfill. We were able to recycle things, you know, like mattresses, electric, electronics, white goods, things like that. This initiative not only helped keep Santee clean, but also contributed to our ongoing commitment to reducing our environmental impact and promoting a more sustainable future. I wanted to take a moment to invite all Santee residents to our first community cleanup that's happening Saturday, April 5th. This year, we're super excited because we formed a partnership with the Goodwill. Unfortunately, when we're doing these cleanups and it's myself and our entire operations staff that are out there offloading the cars while, when they come up. So the residents just pull up and we help offload them. There's some really good stuff that is coming out of these cars and we hate throwing it away. So I reached out to the Goodwill and I said, can you help us? We think we can help you. And so they're super excited. They're going to be there. They're bringing a truck and a team and they'll get first dibs. And if it's materials that they can repurpose or reuse, they're going to do that. And they will be on site and they will provide tax donation receipts. So anybody that makes a donation will get a receipt on Saturday, April 5th. So come, bring us your stuff. We have lots of hands to take it for you. And we'll be there from eight to 12 right here in City Hall Parking Lot over by the Community Services Department. Just a quick legislative update. As the state continues to prioritize sustainability and environmental responsibility, just wanted to take a moment to share several upcoming legislative actions aimed at improving recycling practices and reducing waste. These initiatives are going to affect how we recycle and where we take the material and reduce contamination. So the first one is SB 1383. We're currently in that period now. This includes organics recycling, but there's going to be more push to divert more organics. So you'll see us out there educating the public on proper ways to get the food scraps into the green waste carts and in, and in the businesses. It also sets a law, a decrease in organics disposal by 75% in the landfill, as well as recovering 20% of edible food for human consumption. And so we're out there educating the businesses. There's two tiers, tier one, tier two, those that generate food and how they can donate it and where they can donate it because it's now a law and they have to donate it. So we'll continue to focus our efforts on that. The second one is SB 54. And this aims to reduce single-use plastic packaging and foodware. It sets an ambitious target for 2032, including ensuring that 100, I'm sorry, 100%. I'm sorry, 100% of such items are recyclable or compostable. And that is in the works now, but we have until 2032 to do that. A second part of SB 54 is the polystyrene foam band, which is also known as Styrofoam. California has implemented a statewide ban on polystyrene foam products, including food containers, effective January 1, 2025. So this measure aims to reduce environmental pollution caused by the foam, and it is already in effect. And so we're working on businesses, on educating them that they need to change their to-go containers from the polystyrene to a compostable product or recyclable product. SB 707, signed into law in 2024, requires clothing producers to establish recycling programs for their products. Manufacturers must implement systems for reuse, repair, and recycling of apparel and household textiles with programs fully operational by 2028. And then we have SB 1046. This is also effective January 1 this year. California prohibits plastic produce bags. So if you've been to Trader Joe's lately or Vons or anything like that, you'll notice that they're compostable material. It's commonly used for like your fruits and vegetables. It requires the stores to replace those old plastic produce bags with recycled paper compostable bags. And lastly, we have SB 343, and this establishes criteria for products and packaging to be labeled as recyclable. To bear such labels, they must be free of components, inks, additives, or labels that hinder the recycling process and be designed to ensure recyclability. We have a dedicated team of government affairs representatives that are collaborating with the state constantly, providing feedback to ensure that we can provide effective and compliant solutions for municipalities. So rest assured, we are working with the state to try to make this easy, but wanted to share with you what's coming down the pipe. And of course, you know me. I love our little WM fans, and I always have to share with you the ones that we come across in the community. And this is Copeland. Copeland lives over by the lakes. And our driver, you can see him pictured there right next to her. That's Juan Beoso Jr. He's like a celebrity to all the kids out there. He's the trash driver. He's been with us for 27 years. He finds these kids, and he's like, KP, that's my nickname. He's like, "I got another one. All right, let's go." So Copeland fell in love with the trash truck. I mean, she was barely walking. Her mom sent me this video that she made of Juan coming up, and she's just delighted every time he comes up and takes time and says hello. And so she celebrated her third birthday, and she had a WM-themed birthday party. So all she wanted to do was have Juan show up. And this is Juan. On his day off, he was on vacation this week, but he came all the way out here from Ojai to come see Copeland. And we surprised her, and it was just such a joy. It's really cool to see these kids and how much they love the Trashmen. And I always wonder, like, how long is that going to last before they realize what we're picking up? But it seems to stay around for a while. So just another example of our community partnerships and the connections that we have with your residents and businesses out there every single day. In closing, we'd like to extend our sincere gratitude to the city of Santee, its residents and businesses for the opportunity to serve you and your solid waste and collection services, and for our community partnerships. It's an honor to be a trusted partner here in the city. We appreciate the opportunity to maintain the cleanliness and sustainability here in the great city. Together, we're strengthening the fabric of this wonderful community and making a lasting impact for future generations. Thank you, Santee. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have them.
You know, the only thing I want to say is the company is only as good as the employees.
We have some pretty good employees. We are very lucky.
Anybody else?
Congratulations on a great find from the city of Santee.
Yeah, right? Oh, yes.
So how long does it take to charge a truck?
It's overnight. It's about 10, 12 hours, yeah.
One of the big charging stations?
It's huge. It's massive. And the plug, it's like, it takes two people to put that thing in.
Well, we have MTS or putting big...
Yeah, we have that. So last year, we, at the beginning of last year, we did a slow-fill conversion, because before that, one gentleman would have to fill up all the trucks at night. So one at a time, 160 trucks.
And no one's trying to light them on fire?
No, not yet.
Not pistols.
Please, no. But yeah, so we have a slow-fill line. So the drivers just pull in, they connect the truck, and it slow fills overnight. And thank you for that. I wanted to also formally announce that we hired Ms. Kristin Dare as one of our education outreach reps for the San Diego County area. So she is now part of our team, and she'll be assisting the San Diego County open market customers with their education and outreach. So we're excited to have her. And yeah, she's 48,276 employee that works at WM, because we have over 48,000, and they're great people. So we're excited to have her.
Give or take one or two, right?
What's that?
Give or take one or two?
Absolutely.
Is that your employee number?
So, all right. Well, thanks, guys.
Okay, that takes us to non-agenda public, excuse me, for consent calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on that calendar?
No.
None for me.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
None for me, and motion to approve.
Thank you. None for me. City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney? And do we have any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. And did you get both of those, James?
Yes, that was McNellis with the motion, and Councilmember Hall with the second.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to non-agenda public comment. Vice Mayor, you have us.
We have one speaker for non-agenda public comment.
Hi. Oh, I forgot my picture. Hold on. So I just wanted to tell you I'm out of purple, but pretend like one of these reds is purple. Red and blue makes purple, so we all need to get along. And then, of course, we're the USA. Because I'm seeing in other cities stuff that's happening with different groups that are asking for protection, which is nice, but we all need to be protected, right? And then I want to share Isla Ruth with you, but I want this back. I'm just going to put it up so you could see what I look at every time I'm up here.
Thank you. That takes us to a public hearing. Item number eight, continued public hearing for a tentative map, parcel map, TPM 20201, and development review permit, DR 2020-1, for a residential subdivision consisting of four single-family dwelling units located at 8732 Prospect Avenue in the low-medium-density residential R2 zone. Applicant is Palm Tree Investments. I like that name for some reason. It's very calming.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is for a subdivision consisting of four parcels. Each parcel will be developed with a two-story, single-family residence and two-car garage. In July of 2020, a tentative parcel map was submitted for the subdivision of a 0.85-acre parcel into four lots with access from Our Way, which is a private road. In January 2023, a public hearing was held, and City Council continued the project to allow the applicant to address concerns regarding access and potential drainage issues. In June 2023, a committee meeting was held to discuss access and the drainage issues. In June 2024, the applicant submitted revised plans showing access from Prospect Avenue. The project site is located on the northwest corner of Prospect Avenue and Our Way. Our Way is a private access easement that traverses the easterly side of the subject property. The site is developed with a single-family residence and is currently unoccupied and will be demolished. The site is within the R2 zone and is immediately surrounded by one- and two-story, single-family homes also in the R2 zone. These are aerial views of the site, showing the previous and proposed plan. The previous plan shows access from Our Way, and the proposed plan shows access from Prospect Avenue. The lot square footages have also changed, but the project meets the minimum requirements for lot size, lot width, and lot depth. The applicant is required to construct drainage improvements on the north side of Prospect Avenue to accommodate the street runoff. The applicant is also required to construct vegetated swales on Our Way to convey flows to discharge at the property's northeastern corner. Based on the hydrology study, the post-development flows will not exceed the pre-development flows. And the applicant's drainage engineer is here tonight to provide additional information if necessary. This is the proposed site plan. Each parcel will be developed with an approximately 2,300-square-foot residence and two-car garage. The project meets the development standards for the R2 zone, including density, setbacks, height, and lot coverage. As mentioned earlier, the homes will be accessed from Prospect Avenue through a 26-foot-wide driveway. The applicant is required to provide public improvements on the north side of Prospect Avenue, including concrete curb and gutter, streetlights, pedestrian facilities, and landscaping. The applicant is also required to construct curbs and curb cuts and concrete berms along Our Way. A six-foot-high masonry wall would be constructed along Prospect Avenue, and six-foot-high perimeter fencing and privacy fencing for each lot would be provided. The proposed homes would each consist of two stories with a maximum building height of 25 feet. The homes would be consistent with the development in the area, which primarily consist of one- and two-story, single-family homes. The proposed tentative parcel map is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15315, minor land division of the CEQA guidelines. Staff recommends that City Council open and close a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the TPM and DR resolutions. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. I have several speaker slips. Let's go ahead and call the speakers.
The first speaker is, we have three on behalf of the applicant. Public and applicants do get 15 minutes to speak if needed. Those speakers are Teresa Estrada, Thomas Romero, and Rick Alzaga.
Teresa, do you maybe want to go last on this in case you have to answer any questions?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Let's call the rest of them first.
Becky Kennedy.
Good evening. I'm a resident on Our Way. Actually, built the house there in 1978. But I just, there's concerns that have been issued about the drainage, how many houses are being put in there, how much access they're going to have on Our Way, and that Our Way is a privately owned that we have to access. There's 19 homes on it, and we do own part of the road. And we don't want any more persons or cars on our road. It's just, yeah. We have such limited parking for our own people that we live with in our street, so it's kind of hard to have this projected to us at this time. We'd actually, we were thinking about that we would like a wall constructed between the two subjects on the lot on Our Way to block occupants from accessing the lot from Our Way and separate houses from Our Way with no gates and accesses to Our Way at all. Any construction equipment needs to access, excuse me, the subject lot from the Prospect Road and remain on the lot, because Our Way, we've had so much of our road already damaged from certain things over the years because of stuff going on over there. The equipment from the last developer on Our Way damaged the newly surfaced road on Our Way, the private road with the constructive equipment. And we don't want that to happen again. Like I said, we have to maintain that road with our own money, our street, Our Way. As soon as the homes were sold and he made his profits, he was gone, and we were never burdened from the premature damage. We were never, yeah. And so then, there's been no owner of the subject parcel now has contributed toward the maintenance or upkeep of Our Way, only the homeowners having cured through the decades. Not that place over there, so, yeah. We are concerned about, if there were four homes over there, that would increase the traffic on Prospect, which there's already a lot of stuff going on there, because they put the KB Homes in right past us and all the other homes in past us. We've got cars racing down Prospect constantly now.
The next speaker is Beth Atuataisi.
Councilor Bristens, I've been a resident owner on Our Way since 1999. It's a privately maintained road our landowners have put into it, but the owners of the subject parcel have not contributed anything to it. We're concerned about the development of four houses of 2,300-plus square feet there. We believe it's going to be unduly burdensome for our small community there. Issues are parking and access, unwelcome wearing of our private road, traffic congestion, drainage issues, and further taking away our views. We're wondering, with four large houses put on that one lot, where are all their guests going to park? There's no parking allowed on Prospect Avenue. We have Our Way, but we already have parking issues on Our Way. Nobody helps us with maintaining. Those of us who have lived there have taken care of the road ourselves. We don't want to have any more persons or cars using our road. We own the dirt under our road. Each of us landowners own a portion of it. As Becky mentioned, there's issues with the construction equipment. The last person that came and developed a couple of properties out there came right after we resurfaced the road. Their construction equipment damaged our road. They sold the properties, made their profit, and took off, and we had to resurface the road yet again. Having four additional houses there will increase the traffic on Prospect Avenue. We already have a tremendous burden there because of the KB Homes coming and adding dozens of homes there. Rush hour times are not very pleasant. And we're concerned with the subject property. The access would be from a low vantage point, so there's a safety concern. If there's going to be four houses there, how are they going to get up safely out to the road? Because cars do go by fast on Prospect now. The storm drain issues, those are significant. There's presently a ditch which protects my house, which is right next to the subject property. I've had so much flooding in my yard that comes down the hill. We did not buy our properties into the situation, but the development...
The next speaker is Lacy Corneo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lacey, what's your last name again?
Cornejo.
Corne.
Yes. Hi, good evening, council. Thank you. First, I would like to address, I am a resident of our way. We are a community of residents who have been in Santee for 50 to 60 years, generations. We're not opposed to the development of the lot. We have come and spoke previously regarding our concerns. At the last meeting, we were advised that the owner would need to meet with all the residents in the area to further discuss the next steps, kind of come up with giving us all, you know, a little advice and help each other with helping her project. That has not taken place. 75% of the residents were not notified of today's hearing. The mail was not delivered into the mailbox, so a lot of people have no idea that this was taking place today, which is a concern. We have legal representation currently regarding flood issues that took place in January of 2024 with the storm drain that is present on our way. There is significant concern regarding flooding. Adding additional homes is going to significantly impact the homeowners on our way. We are concerned that the property is a historic site. We have looked into that substantially. So we definitely have concerns regarding the home that is already on the lot. Having four two-story homes seems a little bit excessive. There's multiple homes that are completely blocked in on every side. If they incorporate four two-story homes, it completely blocks people in their own home. There is going to be a huge lack of privacy. And there are homes on Prospect Avenue directly across from where the proposed entrance is that have handicapped children that the city school buses stop daily to pick up. We already have a significant traffic issue trying to exit our way during the mornings. And we're concerned, like I said, we would love to see development, but we would love to have it be fair and safe for the long-term residents that have paid to maintain our way and that live in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Keith Kobel.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Keith Kobel. I live on our way. I've lived there, oh, close to 30 years now. I basically have two concerns. I can wrap this up quickly. The first one is a concern if the person in lot number one was to have a Super Bowl party, and he has 10 guests show up, where will they park? And if they're going to park on our way, is that our right to keep that as our private property? And if it is our right to keep it as our private property, what is our remedy if they were to use that road to park on? You can say they won't park on there, but believe me, in two years, three years, people will start to want to go there to park. So that's my main concern, is that's our road, we pay for it, it's in our deeds. We don't want to share. The second thing is, I'm not so sure that drainage has been issued, has been addressed To the east of their lots are Becky's house and Beth's house. No, Beth's house is to the north. It's Becky's house. Behind Becky's house is a drainage ditch where all the water that already comes down from Prospect goes through that drainage ditch, goes behind her house and behind the next house, which is east of Beth's house. And then it goes across, I guess, the easement that's in front of my house, and then it naturally goes down through the front of my yard. And then it's supposed to go, the water is supposed to drain in the property that is just north of Beth's house. So you have the property that you're talking about, north of that is Beth's house, and then north of that is another house. And through that lot was where the drainage ditch went through. The water would not just meander, as I've heard the term used last time I was here. The water would go, was supposed to go through that ditch, through that lot, and then exit through the backside of our way. And in that property, that ditch is silted over, so the water does not go there. The water pretty much just goes down and it doesn't follow the path it was originally intended to follow. So in my last 10 seconds, I would like to say, please address and understand the drainage issue and what is our remedy to parking. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Keith.
The remaining speakers are on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, do you want to come up and address any of those questions or concerns? And then after that, then we'll have some more questions probably for staff regarding.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, good to see you all again. So I'd love to address some of the things I had brought up today, and I do have both Tomas and Rick, who are my engineers on the project, that have been helping me, and we'll be able to address some of the specifics on our project. Going back to what he just was speaking about, about the ditch behind Becky's house, I do understand there's some concerns on that, but I really don't have much comments on that since that is outside of the scope of our project. It's even completely east of where we are. So our project does not directly impact the ditch behind the houses, but I can tell you that what we have done based on the initial meeting from January 2023, we've redesigned everything, so now we no longer intend to go off our way at all. We do intend to only use Prospect. There will be a 26-foot-wide driveway that goes in a T, and there will be a fence along our way to not have any access to our way from this project. So it has been redesigned to keep everything combined. There will be a 26-foot-wide driveway going down and then across within our lot so that there will be ample parking. There's two spots at every home, and then there's also two garages. So related to the access on our way, we do not intend to have any access at this point. So I think that kind of addresses all of that. And then if there's any specific questions related to the drainage, I do have people here that can address those questions.
Do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay.
We have a couple. Now, are they, I guess this is more to the attorney, could they put in permit parking to keep the people out of there? I mean, tollway zones type thing or on the private property part?
Since it's private property.
Microphone, please.
No, about that. Since it's private property, they would not have to do anything that the city would do in a similar situation, and they would have, it sounds like they already have legal counsel to advise them on their rights in that regard.
I actually have a question then regarding that idea there. Is our way, doesn't, does Palm Tree Investments own to the center?
We do. So we own the west part of the proposed lot, and then the center of 25 feet within our way is part of our lot, which is now an easement.
Now, I think that, I remember us talking about that actually at the meeting we had before, and I remember hearing concerns about the lack of maintenance of that road or things of that nature. Now, is there a plan to pave this road now or to enhance it, I guess, in any way because of construction?
Yeah, so basically, the plan for the proposed lot will be to develop the area, leaving our way alone, however, to the west side of our way, it will have a curb as well as drainage swells as it comes down within our property, right? Not going into the our way easement. So we do plan to leave the easement alone, however, we will be improving the west side of our way with the curb.
Great, thanks. Carl, are we going to condition that also to have some, that doesn't just go off into the brow-type ditch drainage that's already there, that's lined with usually rocks and things? Doesn't it have to go into something else besides that?
Yeah, and, you know, the applicant may be able to elaborate, but I can speak of what's on the plan. So all the drainage on site is per municipal code and per stormwater regulations. They have to treat it. They cannot increase off-flow. So all of that's being treated. They've met our conditions. They've redesigned it to meet those conditions and questions. They're containing everything on site for water quality and for discharge, still outletting it similar to where it discharges today, to the best of our ability. And along our way, they're putting broken curb along the edge, so even our way can drain into the ditch as well, which will be vegetated and, you know, some of it, and there's a French drain kind of underneath it. It'll seep through, be treated, it'll attenuate it a little bit, then eventually outlet at the very north, northeastern corner of the property where it roughly exits today. Because right now, the existing lot has been developed over multiple years, and it has multiple buildings that have been built and demoed, and it kind of just meanders through the existing lot and kind of finds its way to our way in the same location today.
Okay. Teresa, maybe your engineer can come up and explain how that they're going to be able to maintain at least the same amount of water flow coming off or less, because I, in my brain, I'm thinking, okay, we have more concrete and asphalt and things of that nature, so there would have to be more runoff, or you would imagine there's more runoff. So how do you engineer that? Is that the hydrology part of this? How do you keep it from creating a bigger mess than what could be?
So good evening, Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor McNallys, and distinguished council members. So I am the hydrologist for Mrs. Estrada for this project.
I'm sorry, just give us your name also.
Rick Alzaga.
Okay, thank you.
So as the hydrologist, so designing the site does have its challenges, but I will do my best to explain how we actually accomplish this. So as just explained, for our way, we are not reconstructing our way, but we are finishing the improvements on the edge. So the flows that do come toward the project will have curb cuts with vegetation, perforated pipe underneath, and we're going to do the best we can to treat that water and discharge that water. Now, for the site as a whole, as mentioned earlier, the project was originally approved with access off our way, and we had gotten that to work. With the redesign off of Prospect, it increased the concrete area because of that much more driveway. So it is challenging, but this is what we do. The property itself is, no water in general is accessing, entering the site. Prospect is staying on Prospect and then going down our way. And to the west of the site, that neighbor, it seems like possibly there might be some drainage, but it was difficult to determine, but nevertheless, we accounted for that drainage when we did the ditch on the northerly property line. For the site itself, the way it's done, so we have to address several items. One, the obvious one is not to release more water in the post-development flow than in the pre-development flows. So that's challenge number one. The other obstacle is we have to treat the water. So we have to capture all the water, we have to address the water quality component to it, and also, in this case, the hydromodification component to it. So there are three components that I had to address. For the water quality, we sized a BMP, the BMP just east of the lot number four, which is the far right side, near the northeast corner.
What's a BMP? I'm sorry, we don't all speak in the acronyms up here.
Okay, so we, I designed a vegetated basin. So basically, it's a hole in the ground.
You have a catch basin for the water.
I'm sorry?
You have a catch basin for the water.
Yes, a biofiltration system. And so from above, it's a depression. And below, it's all the engineering, the gravel, the soil, the sizing of it, the piping of it. And so we sized that to address the water quality component, to make sure whatever's coming from the site, we treat it. So we're doing that. There's also a hydromodification component to it, which is a fancy word for we are controlling the excess flows in the post-development to still be at the existing. And these sizings are for the 10-year flows. This is part of the water quality requirements. So the underground was sized to do just that. The 100-year storm, that's where the depression comes in. So this was sized to, again, to ensure that the post-development flows do not exceed the existing. This depression will contain it like a tub. It will contain that water and do a controlled release. So there's a couple pipes. The one that's at the bottom that treats the water has a very small outlet, and it's like .2 CFS. So just a little bit of water. Now, before this, we calculated the pre-development, which is just under 1 CFS, .9, a little more exact. So .2 goes off at the very bottom. So now the surface, the tub, I had to size that in a way with pipes to only allow .7, which adds up to .9. So this basin allows us to ensure that the, after construction flows, will not exceed the existing flows, and it's approximately .9 cubic feet per second.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a follow-up question?
Yeah. So I think you've sort of, you've dealt with the drainage for us, I think. I mean, we've dealt with a lot of these projects before, but unfortunately for the neighbors, they don't. This is not what they do. This is, they're looking at this and going, what the heck? This doesn't make any sense to us. But California codes now require for water to be retained on property and then discharged underground to the fullest extent possible. So that's why I bring up the catch basins. So for the residents, actually, it is, it's not just going to Santee municipal code issue, it's a state requirement that water gets, any water that comes off the property or onto the roof into a driveway or anything like that is directed to a catch basin and then treated and then released back into the water flow. So to give you an answer to your question, is this going to be better or worse? It's going to be better, the water flow and detention, it's going to be better than you already have with the property as it sits right now. So not only is there going to be less water getting onto our way, but there's, it's going to be cleaner water when it does actually go out its natural way, which happens to be on our way. The ingress and egress, so it's 100% contained on the Prospect, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's no longer, there's no access? And you said you're putting a fence or a wall?
Right, well, based on the requirements with the fire, right now I believe it's a fence.
We didn't, like chain link fence or?
No, it's not. It's like a wooden fence.
Okay. So you have a wood fence on?
The west side of our way.
Okay.
And there is a wall just for parcel four is because our way goes down, so as you keep going down, the level pad of lot four, so that's where you do get that, no more than a six-foot-tall wall.
So there is no access. If somebody wanted to access it, they couldn't do that.
Correct.
Which will mitigate parking on our way, but it doesn't, to the resident's point, it doesn't completely stop it, which brought us back to what Councilmember Hall was asking our city attorney about, and so it's something I would actually like to know as well, being that this is, now, so this is a double-edged sword, because this parcel actually does have an easement on that, on that, on that road as well, because it, it's one of the members of this, it's called a private road agreement that you guys have and all maintain. Now, I understand that this owner, or maybe the previous owners or anybody before, didn't contribute to that, but it is, it is still a private road agreement, and they do have access to it. So if there's a, to be able, I don't know that you can block them, being that it's a private property. I don't know that you can block them from having access to parking on that if anybody else has access to parking on that. But if there is something that we can look at, because it's obvious, it's obviously applicant's initiative not to.
They could make it a gated community, too.
That's going to, that's a whole different situation there. Making it a gated community doesn't do anything from keeping someone from parking on another road. Let's look at Wood Glen Vista. Let's look at Wood Glen Vista. The apartment complex, there is a gated complex. Where does everybody park?
Councilmember McNellis, if I could add, given that the road is roughly 26, 28 feet, it would have to be maintained as fire access anyway, so no parking would be allowed technically anyway.
So is there parking on, in that spot right now?
I think it's, people do park there. However, technically with this project, under fire code, you're no longer allowed to because we would require 26 feet access. That's our, kind of our code requirement now, working with our new fire marshal and the fire chief.
Okay, so.
We want to keep at least 26 feet wide for fire apparatus and prevention. Sorry, chief, I don't want to speak for you, but you know, technically, that's why we require those limits, because it'll be like a fire lane to access all those homes. That's an engineering and a fire condition typically.
That could, that could be posted then.
Yeah, that could be posted that way.
Would that be a red zone then or?
We could just sign, we would probably normally have the applicant sign it and say, fire lane, no parking.
Okay.
But since it's an old neighborhood, that was never a thing, because that wasn't a requirement. You know, back in the 70s when those homes were built, so a little different. And just to clarify, there's two 25-foot easements. There's actually 50 feet of road potential here, 25 on the applicant's and 25 on all the other lots along the applicant's property as well. That's not currently being used for a road. The applicant's road is currently being used primarily for all the private access for all the residents along our way.
Okay.
All right, you can kind of see it on the exhibit here. There shows two 25-foot private easements.
On our way.
Yeah.
All right, so the chance of somebody parking further up the road, our way, just to, and then to walk the 50 feet and then to walk another 25 feet on Prospect to go in is?
It doesn't make sense. And I think the applicant realized that, and that's why they're continuing to allow that access. And they're, it's very complicated because there's, gosh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 easements on that 25-foot segment from the 50s through the 70s and all the way to 2019 for utilities, for access, for different things that have been granted through the year. So it's very complicated.
So, okay, but that's on the, that's on the west side of the property. What about?
That's on the west side. On the east side, the 25, as far as I can tell, that was granted in 2019 and 1977.
So what's to keep somebody from parking on the east side of the property?
I guess they could if they, all the residents agree, as long as we have 26 foot clear.
That's the question, if all the residents agree. So we've got residents that this is not their property, this is not their parcel, it's not their project, but residents that live on the east side that are stating that parking on, on that road is already at a premium at best. What can we do, anything, is there anything that can be done to prohibit parking?
Right now, the conditions of approval require no parking to be allowed in, in your packet and in the resolutions of approval. No parking is allowed on that 25-foot segment of the applicant's property. The residents on the other side technically could.
I mean, yes, of course, we, obviously, the residents want to be able to park in front of their own house.
Yes.
They just don't want these residents parking in front of their house.
Correct.
And there's, is there any way to mitigate that? Is there anything that can be done to mitigate that without, I mean?
Not with this applicant's project. It wouldn't, there wouldn't be a nexus to do that on other people's property to mitigate their easements.
I think you're missing my whole entire point.
I might be. I'm sorry if I am.
I'm talking, so people that move into this development, as, as one of the, or one of the speakers stated, you know, they have a Super Bowl party. And now you've got a big group that comes and shows up, you've got 40 people that want to pull in, two per car, and now they want to park on the west, I'm sorry, the east side.
They couldn't, because they're not a party to that easement. That easement isn't granted to this applicant. It's granted to those other property owners that already live there.
What precludes them from doing that? Can they have them towed?
I guess that just becomes an enforcement issue for private property, like the attorney had mentioned. That would be up to them to enforce it. We don't enforce private parking on private property.
That's more of the question I'm asking. Is there anything that can be done? So the property owner would have to call and?
I'd like to see the document, the easements and work with Carl to be more specific, but they would have to take action
Themselves.
to enforce their own private property rights.
Okay, but they're, they're basically foregoing their right of the easement, parking easement on their section of this, on our way.
Yeah, I guess to be more clear, they're actually parking, they're their driveways right now for these homes on the?
Well, I understand, but as I stated earlier, this is a private, it's a, it's a private road agreement that they have on our way.
And the new applicant is not a party to that, to that other half that it currently exists.
They haven't, but they have an easement on that road.
They have an easement on their 25 feet, not on the other 25 feet.
And that's what I'm asking you. On that 25 feet, are they giving up basically their right? Because it is a 25-foot easement on our way. So can, I mean, if they have somebody, a friend that wants to come in?
They couldn't. There's a condition in the plans that says on their 25 feet, they cannot park there.
Thank you very much. All right, that's crystal clear, I hope, to everybody here that they don't have the right for that. So if somebody does from this development park in front of your space, you can call somebody to have them removed. It's not the something the city does, because it is your private road though. Somebody, there was one of the other slides here that had the actual square footage of the parcels. Can you pull up that slide? All right, thank you very much. So only one of these parcels is 6,500 square feet, which 6,000 is the typical square footage of a parcel in the city of Santee. I know many of you have parcels that are much larger than that, but the typical parcel in Santee has been 6,000 square feet. So these are actually quite large parcels. So I'm sorry, but to state that, you know, that somebody's completely blocked in and this is too small. It's, it's, these are big lots for the city of Santee, especially for new development. These are really big lots. I think people will enjoy having a lot this size. I do appreciate you moving the ingress, egress to Prospect. I thought that that was probably a better idea. I understand hearing from somebody else now, why, is there an elevation issue to bring, you have to bring the property up to be able? So that will be done, so it'll be smooth. It's not climbing up a hill to get onto Prospect. It'll be, the elevation will be level. Thank you. And just now, because they brought it up, the drainage culverts that are behind, not on the subject property, but behind there, who maintains those? Is that the city or is that, are those private as well?
We have a small amount that's in the right-of-way, right at the outlet on, when you look at this picture, to the right where it says Prospect Avenue, you can see there's a concrete ditch there. We maintain the head wall and the pipe. The rest is all privately owned and maintained and built as concrete behind those first three homes. And like one of the applicants said, then it eventually goes into dirt and kind of meanders with the original drainage pattern when the homes were built.
Okay, so it's up to the residents to, because somebody mentioned it, you know, gets filled with silt and dirt and everything, but it's up to the residents to clean that out. That's their private property. It's not, it's not public.
It's not owned or maintained by the city, no.
Okay. And I, I still, I. So after the water comes out of its purification system, some of it's discharged underground. Some of it's going to come out. I mean, it just is what it is, especially 100-year flood or 10-year flood plans. Where is that being led to?
So the 100-year is still being contained. That's why the depression now. 100% of the 100-year flood is going to be contained, and it'll be like a catch and release. So when that rain does come, that'll fill up, but it's going to trickle out. And the two pipes, the one for the water that seeps into the ground that gets treated, there's a small pipe at the base of the, of the rock, adjacent to our way. And there's another pipe for the 100-year storm that's going to take in water. There's another pipe, and that's another pipe that's going to outlet also on the wall. So the wall itself.
Which wall?
The wall that I mentioned that from lot four, at the beginning of lot four, to travel north to the northeast corner.
Northeast corner of that, okay.
So the wall goes like from one foot to two, to six feet. At the base of that, or actually, the majority of that stretch is rock. It's riprap to slow down the water. So whatever's coming into it, as well as when the pipes, the two, the small pipe underneath and the bigger pipe above for the 100-year storm, they're going to outlet onto that same rock.
And so it'll go onto our way?
It'll go onto our way, and that was also shown to discharge at a, what we call non-erusive, at approximately three feet per second, which is probably the same or better than what's happening today, just because it's, all sheet flows out right now. And just to give the people an idea of what that looks like, when we walk, normal walking speed, that's four feet per second. That's how we calculate that. So this is slower flows than that. So it'll be.
It's a trickle.
Well, somewhat of a trickle. It'll be concentrated, which is one good thing, because right now, I think along the northerly PL, water just kind of sheet flows and does what it does, is a wooden fence. I'm guessing some water eventually on big rains maybe goes under that fence, but that won't be the case anymore. There'll be a concrete ditch along the entire property line right there. So it'll capture everything that comes to that point. It will also be directed to the corner. But at the end of the day, that corner will discharge the same or less than what they've seen today.
Okay, with cleaner water.
With cleaner water.
Thank you.
Think I'll get dirty again.
Can I ask a quick question again? What's the maximum allowable houses that could be built there?
If I may, I believe it's zoned, resident, low to medium, 4.3 homes per acre.
So the maximum lot coverage is 40%.
Okay, but I mean, how many houses could be built there if they want?
Technically.
Technically.
Two to five units an acre.
Okay, now that I said that, how many houses?
Four.
Okay, could they put in affordable housing in there? Or could they put in ADUs in there?
Yes, they could put ADUs.
So they could put an ADU on each one, so they'd have eight units. Could they put affordable housing in there, like maybe 30 units if they needed to? Assuming they're all affordable?
That was something I think that originally, what had talked about, has to be totally changed, public hearing and voted on, so.
It's not zoned for it now. It's not currently zoned.
Just want to make sure, but they could put eight houses in if they wanted to. So I just want to make sure that people know that.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, so you're saying that they would need to go through hearings in order to put an ADU on there?
No, no, that's, just so you know, that the California legislature created some laws that says you can put ADUs, not ADUs, but affordable housing. And actually, affordable housing, you still have to have a hearing and everything, but it doesn't actually stop the, you know, of the development. Because essentially, what it says is that as long as there's a bus bench or a piece of trans, public transportation within a quarter mile, they could build anything they want there on that property.
So basically, what you're saying is that these four houses could turn into eight?
Pardon me? No, they can actually put like an affordable, portable housing, a complex there that could have, you know, three to five stories with, you know, maybe, you know, tons of homes in it.
It won't. I think, I think the point is, I'm only putting four. That's the best plan. That's the final. I didn't choose to put eight. I could have put eight, but I'm not. I'm saying with what's in the residential area, to give everyone larger lots with one single home, not eight homes with no yard. So that was a decision we made to stay with just small family homes with a larger lot for the neighborhood.
Well, just for further clarification, I think what the councilman was asking is how many units could we have by right on an R2 on this lot? And the answer is four, right? And then I think the next question is, could they have an ADU? And the answer is yes, they can, and that state preempts, right, what we're able to do. But I think what Carl was also saying is that, you know, there are other restrictions that the city has related to intensity and density of our uses. And that any intensity that we would be increasing or density would have to come through a hearing that would happen here at city council. So I believe that's all of that, but it's not designated in our housing element and our sites inventory for affordable housing. There's no 30 units that were ever envisioned for this site. So just to be clear, I think that covers the questions.
That's correct. But we were just trying to show what the worst-case scenario is if they, somebody want to invoke state law, because those people are crazy up there, so.
James, can you bring the tentative parcel map back up, please? Or is it controlled down there?
It's controlled down there. Christina, can you please bring it up?
Yeah, can you bring it up, please? So Carl, I had a few more questions for you on, on this here. So can you explain what the wood piles that are there right now, typical?
I think those are existing and those would be removed, is my understanding.
Right, that's what I'm reading here. So all wood piles, landscaping, fencing.
Yeah, they're going to.
West of our way to asphalt.
Yeah, and you can kind of see these striped double lines. Those are curbs with cuts in them to allow drainage to go through.
Right, so then, enhancement next question is, it also says curb and gutter, right? So is the gutter the full entire length?
Yes.
Okay, so where's that water in the gutter going?
That's what flows through and goes into the swale, into the vegetated swale along the whole eastern side of the property.
So is, is the road crowned or how is it, is it, because is it getting to that gutter?
It's kind of variable. It's mildly crowned and it's kind of flat.
That's why I'm wondering how it's going to get to this perforated gutter.
It does what it does today, and the applicant's not asking to change it. But they are creating a method to take any water that comes off our way onto the vegetated swale to alleviate some of that concern.
So that, the proposed curb that's perforated, let's say, is there a swell behind that?
It's behind that.
And it's going down to that riprap?
Yep, so it's going to flow into that swale, and that's a vegetated swale. There's some permeability to it, as the applicant mentioned, and there's a French drain underneath it. And then it eventually all outlets to the riprap where that, the rocky-looking section is on the northeast corner.
And this, this is just the surface water off, off that street only?
And to outlet the 60 by 20 basin, it's hard for me to delineate here.
I, I see, I'm just talking about the perforated curb. It's, it's only capturing the surface water.
It's actually both, because the pipe outlet from the basin will outlet into the riprap as well. So it's serving both purposes.
The upper one, the biofiltration on Prospect or?
No, no, the, well, actually, this one all collects along Prospect. It goes down our way, it outlets to the riprap. And then the bio basin, the BMP, we call it BMP, that also outlets to that same location.
There's also a note here that says, existing mailbox to remain. What is that mailbox?
It's a gang mailbox for all the residents currently on that street.
So this is their postal box for all the residents?
And that'll remain in place.
And it's on their property?
Correct. That's, you know, the postmaster general often sets those. We don't get a choice on that.
The splash walls that are into the, in, at the end of the ripraps down there, that's obviously to try to contain the water into the, to the swell?
Correct.
And Matt, how wide is that splash wall, Rick?
So at the riprap of each, for parcel three and four.
Correct, in the rear.
Where those tree walls are. And so whenever water does go down, so the ditch is, I believe it's a two-foot diameter ditch. And the splash walls will probably be approximately a foot tall. And, and, you know, the flows coming off of that are expected to be in a tenth of a CFS. So they're not going to be high velocity or even high flows. So approximately one foot tall at the splash, at the outlet, and probably only about three feet wide.
And two more questions with the drainage here. So on the westerly side of the property line, all the way from Prospect, all the way to that corner, is that also a brow ditch that's running the entire length all the way to the north part of the property line?
Can you repeat that description?
So on the, the westerly property line, coming from basically the street from Prospect, it appears there's drainage going down that whole entire length of the property line. Is that a brow ditch too?
No, that would be sidewalk curb and gutter. So the widening of the road.
Not on Prospect, on the westerly property line.
Oh, running north?
Yes, correct, running north.
Correct. That, that, so that'll be a vegetated swell, because it's basically low flows. And once you hit the corner, it becomes a concrete ditch.
Okay. And then there, on the easterly side, back to our wayside, there's two references in here to. there's two references in here to, it's actually not on here, it's on the other page here. There's our, on the landscape plan, there's reference to retaining walls per civil plan on two, on that stretch there. What is those retaining walls?
Where are they?
It would be on the easterly side of the lot, parcel four and parcel one, along our way. It's referring to a retaining wall per civil plans. Carl?
Yeah, I think that's just to retain and because there's such a great difference as it slopes down, to make level pads and where the fence would run along that as well. If I'm understanding the question correctly.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right, Carl, but what's the finished surface on the street on our way? Is it the 355? Eight?
Sorry, I'm trying to find the cross sections.
Yeah.
I don't think I have them in front of me, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to understand why there's a difference. At that point, I see it on Prospect going down. There's a six foot grade difference going down Prospect. But I don't see a grade difference between our way and the lot.
So if I may answer.
Yeah.
So the existing contours, you enter our way, is 360. And the pad is at 357, but actually there's an up slope. So based off this site plan, it starts off at zero feet, then the wall becomes four feet tall. And as you move northward, it then starts descending three foot. And then once you enter what used to be the access off of our way, it goes down to zero. So then it's level, and then the wall starts up again at zero feet in front of lot four, back to two feet, gets up to, I see, three feet, and then back down to zero feet.
Okay, so it's the other way around. So retaining walls retaining the street, not the, not the pad?
Yeah, because the paths have to be cut down.
Okay. All right, you know, I appreciate the applicant hearing us around the last time. This obviously is, you know, a little bit complicated with the private easements and with the private road there, and obviously that existing driveway that was already there, you know, previously. I do think you guys did accomplish everything that we asked you to come off the right of way on, from Prospect in there. You know, the drainage, existing drainage issues that are there right now, I do agree with the vice mayor that all these mitigation issues will improve what's there now. No one can say if it's going to be perfect. No one can say that it's going to be right. And, you know, it's just like last year, back in January, as you mentioned, we had unprecedented rains here in Santee. You know, I've lived here, you know, 40 plus, you know, 45 years, and I've never seen, you know, I think only one time I can think of it. Mission Gorge actually closed down, and Sam and I were riding around that day. You know, we actually had to close Mission Gorge Road because everything crested over, you know, from Forest Creek and behind Alice's Ford Shop there. And I've seen all those ditches, you know, that stuff full, but I can't remember actually closing Mission Gorge down, you know, because of the rain, so.
The mayor and I were by Woodside, and it was, it was coming down pretty hard there, too.
It was everywhere. Those are, again, call them hundred years or call them press, I don't know. You know, I don't know if we're going to see what we see, but unfortunately, these are things that we had to do. So I do think you guys did an amazing job, you know, listening and trying to mitigate the existing conditions as much as possible. Feedback.
Is that it?
Yeah.
You have anything? Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no more public comment. Does somebody else want to say?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, I do have a motion to approve staff recommendation. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, do you have a second? And please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I hope that, based on the questions we were asking, you understand we did hear what you were saying and try and get everything out that we can, so. That takes us to item number nine, which is a proposed accessible Santee Small Business Grant Program, which utilizes Certified Access Specialist Program fees. And our Pam White will be giving that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Minto and members of the city council. Tonight I'll be providing an overview of the Accessible Santee Small Business Grant Program, which utilizes Certified Access Specialist Program fees. Just to define a few terms, Certified Access Specialist refers to a state certified professional with a training and qualifications to assess a building's compliance with accessibility regulations. Business owners can hire a CASP specialist to inspect their building to ensure compliance with accessibility requirements under both the ADA and the California Building Code and secure a CASP inspection report. A CASP inspection can protect against accessibility-related lawsuits by identifying compliance issues at the property and creating a plan to fix those issues within a reasonable time. Just for background, SB 1186, initially adopted in 2012, initially established a state fee of $1, added to business license fees to improve disability access and compliance and support the statewide Certified Access Specialist CASP program. SB 1186 was later amended by Assembly Bill 1379 in 2017, and more recently by Assembly Bill 2164 in 2022. Cities and counties are now required to collect a state fee of $4, which is added to business license fees. 90% of the fees are retained to support the CASP program, and 10% are remitted to the California Division of the State Architect, DSA, to maintain oversight of the CASP program. Local entities must use these fees for two purposes. First and foremost, to provide training and certification of CASP Certified Access Specialists within that jurisdiction, and two, to provide assistance to businesses in achieving compliance with construction-related accessibility requirements. There is currently $72,610 in CASP funding within the CASP program account. Staff is proposing an accessible Santee Small Business Grant Program at $25,000 per year to provide financial assistance to eligible businesses in obtaining a CASP inspection report, that would be phase one, and then completing the required improvements, phase two. Total funding of $50,000 would be dispersed in two annual funding cycles, budgeted at $25,000 each year. Within each $25,000 annual funding cycle, $10,000 would be allocated toward phase one CASP inspection reports and $1,500 allocated toward phase two accessibility improvements. Regarding the phase one grants, these grants would provide a 50% match up to $1,000 toward a completed CASP inspection report for qualified businesses. And just to explain further, CASP reports for a small business run anywhere from $800 to 2,000, 2,500. And so the match of 1,000 would address, on the higher end, the average of 2,000 per report. The applicant would pay out of pocket for the CASP inspection prior to applying, and the grant would be paid upon completion of the report and submittal requirements. This phase, the phase one, would fund about 10 business grants or more at a maximum of 1,000 each. Phase two grants would provide a 50% match up to 1,500 toward construction of physical accessibility improvements identified in the CASP inspection report for qualified businesses. Would be paid upon completion of the improvements and submittal requirements. The application process would require a contract agreement outlining the scope of work and timeline for completion, with a maximum period for completion. And then the improvements must pass inspection. Building permit and inspection fees would also be waived for these accessibility improvements. Now, these inspections would then be done by our own city staff that utilized the other portion of that funding for their certification to do these inspections. And this second phase would fund about 10 business grants up to the maximum of the 1,500 per grant. Eligibility requirements would be, and these can be modified by council, the business is independently owned with 35 or less employees to target smaller businesses. Businesses located within commercially zoned district in Santee and complies with the permitted uses for that zoning designation. We would need a current business license and W-9 form, which is what all applicants provide. The business or owners would not have any current code compliance violations or outstanding liens or judgments. And then business or owner is not currently the subject of any litigation. This program is proposed as a pilot, two-year program funded at $25,000 each year. CASP certification and program expenses for city building staff are budgeted at an additional $4,500 per year. The current CASP fund budget, I'm sorry, fund balance of $72,610 would support a two-year pilot grant program at $50,000 total plus, this is two-year total, of $9,000 for staff certification. CASP revenue received in fiscal year '23-'24 was $8,902. This translates to 2,472 Santee businesses, and that's assuming 360 per license, which is the 90% we would retain. Funding limits could also be adjusted according to council direction, such as raising the maximum match for construction grants to 2,500 instead of 1,500. And that would provide for at least six grants at the max with the $15,000 phase two allocation instead of 10. The recommendation before you is to authorize staff to initiate the Accessible Santee Small Business Grant Program, subject to any council recommendations as to the proposed program and requirements. Thank you. I'm available for any questions, and our building official, Aaron Sturm, is here as well.
Thank you, Pam. Good job. So we do not have any speaker slips, but I just have a quick question. Might have been here, I might have missed it. If I did, I'm sorry. But is, do we go at this level because we have an estimate, estimate of maybe an average cost to do disability accessible rehab or?
Are you, are you asking?
Yeah. Is it like an average $1,500, $2,000? Based on the fact that, well, maybe they just need a small ramp? Maybe they need to rehab a, you know, bathroom stall or something? How do we arrive at that?
That will, that will totally depend upon the inspection report and that small business. It could be as simple as revised accessible hardware in the restrooms, signage. It could be as simple as a single ramp, or it could be more extensive, lowering counters, literally creating greater hallway space. I mean, it could be any number of those.
We're not looking to fully fund a project, but to assist, right? Isn't that pretty much it? Okay, sounds good. Dustin?
To the mayor's question too, what is a Certified Access Specialist? What does that inspection look like? What are they actually going and doing? I don't know if this is Aaron or Sandy or Pam.
Welcome, Aaron.
Hey, how are you? Aaron, building official. I am the city's CASP. We're working on getting our senior inspector there. A CASP is trained from ADA to the local level of California. And what we're out there to do is to encourage and help the businesses and contractors understand what the rules are during plan checks. So what we're inspecting is mainly trying, what this program is designed to do and a CASP, licensed CASP inspectors to do, is to assess that business, starting from the parking lot, to get in and do their transaction. So that's door handles, thresholds, all the way to the bathroom facilities as they have them. So you have different levels of CASP reports that are done. That CASP report, if a small business gets that done, they'll get some safe harbor in a lawsuit. They don't get full protection, but it helps, one, educate the business where they need to start setting some money aside to fix something that's identified. But once they get that placard, you've probably seen little ISA placards that are in front of buildings, that helps protect and give what they call safe harbor to that person from a lawsuit. So there's a lot of things we look at. There's, you know, 11B, it's a large code in the California building codes for accessibility in businesses, commerce. And then CASP also has to know what's going on with ADA and be able to help inform the clients. For me, they come in, they talk to me about their plan checks and whatnot, and sometimes we get complaints, so I'll go out and inspect that and advise them the best we can. This whole program and this extra money that was benefited, that's coming through business license, was in the law that was just created, was focused on, hey, we need to help small businesses get out there and hire a CASP. How do we encourage them to do that? And that's what this money is. So we've kind of reversed engineered what we have to try and encourage some of these small businesses to come forward and do the applications. Right now, there's nobody in San Diego that has this in place. San Jose is a leader. San Francisco, a couple of small cities there have some programs, but right now we'll be a leader in this, and I think it's a great thing for our community and it helped them out. When I first came here, there were issues that came out and helped at the coffee corner in the shop there. So you can only do so much, but the CASP inspection is just basically all the accessible things that are, started with barrier removal, which is not really the code. It's what's slowing someone down or hindering somebody from getting in there that's either blind, disabled, or challenged in some way. So that's-
Some of the things you're referred to right now is the plan checks. Obviously, when you, when we have a new submittal, you know, from a tender improvement or a new business, right?
Correct.
You're also talking about existing businesses. So there's, is company out there that you can hire to do these inspections for you?
Yeah, San Diego has probably about 100 CASPs that do private inspections, and that's what this is encouraged to do, so like-
Part of the money, the first part of it is, you're looking to get our senior building inspector certified to do this.
The money that's set aside for training, yes.
Yes.
It takes quite a lot and it's quite expensive, because it's just like getting an architect's license. And the passibility of the test is not that great. It's usually around 30 to 20%.
Would it be any other individuals other than just our senior building inspector?
At this point, that's the only building inspector I really have at that point.
If you had another one, let's just say.
If we did have another one, then I would encourage him to get, try and get this license.
Okay, and then Pam also mentioned about waiving the fees for inspections. Why would we, why would we waive the permit fees or inspection fees?
Well, if we had a program, if the program succeeds and we issue a grant, then it'll be my responsibility to go out there and say that was a successful job on replacing the door handles, putting the signage up, adding, even though the bathroom's not compliant in sizes, but adding a grab rail in that bathroom, we'd say that is compliant with the intent of this law. We're trying to make sure that the money is spent for accessibility or not, I keep saying accessibility, but barrier removal.
I'm hearing you, but we're paying you to go do that. So I don't understand, why would we be waiving that fee? There's no permit fee for any of the work to be done?
If, if, if it is applicable to a permit fee, we'll be requesting a permit to be done, you know, issued for that. And of course, we'd scale it to whatever that is. But normally, we're thresholds and things, and so I feel it's kind of our responsibility a little bit to educate and help and not get in the way of a barrier, getting a barrier removal, but that's your choice on how you want to handle it.
I'm not disagreeing on the education part of it. I just, you know, a little combination on, you know, doing the inspections for free or, you know, free permit, because if they, they're doing improvements to the building or they're, I think that, we can talk about that. To the mayor's point, obviously the $1,500, $25, whatever, you know, got there, that's not a lot of money, depending on obviously what the scope of the work is, you know, to do those general- to do those general improvements. One of the things that Pam mentioned was commercially zoned district. So, can you explain that? Because I have a problem with that right off the top. So, we have neighbor, neighbor commercial, industrial zoning. So, are we limiting to certain zones of businesses, Sandy? Or am I missing something?
No, I believe that's the intent, but like, it would be anybody within the commercial zones. So, if you want to expand it to industrial, we could do that per the direction.
Yeah, I mean, the part that I'm concerned, it's, it's anybody who has a business license in the city of Santee. So, we should not be limited to, huh? Yeah, I mean, it should be, it's, any person has a business license in the city of Santee. So, if they're in an industrial zone, it, it's, they have the same issues, you know?
Yeah, and I think the thought was that we have more visitors, like, public visitors to commercial sites as opposed to industrial, but again, it's council direction. You can tell us to do that.
Same, same 11B codes apply to those, to those buildings and those businesses too.
Yeah, for sure.
So, anything that applies to those, I, we shouldn't be limited to. Okay?
Well, was one of the ideas, though, is the pilot program, just to see if it works first? And that way, maybe we keep it in a smaller group? That makes sense?
It does, but I, I don't think we should be limited to, I think all city businesses should be available to this.
Okay.
If we're, if we're all paying it, they should all get it.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're paying that dollar fee on their, their business license.
I get that.
I agree. And much like, I mean, the more we limit it, the less likely we are to have it get utilized, just like we have many other programs where we put this out there and then very few people qualify because, oh, well, I'm not in the right district, or I'm not, I don't make enough money, or I make too much money, or whatever the case may be. The broader the band here, the better likelihood of success of the program, I think.
Well, I had Laura in the queue.
Oh, sorry.
I pushed the button. I know. So, I have a comment and a question. My comment is there, there's language about businesses with no current code violations. Those are the ones eligible, but then I think of our frequent flyers who, maybe they get code compliant for a bit, and then they are uncom, you know, they fall out of compliance and, and they could be, they could apply for this during a window of time where they're currently compliant. But if they have a history of not being compliant, and I'm thinking of all the things that I notice, that I might report, I wouldn't want them to jump ahead of a, a business owner that works with us properly. So, I don't know how to put that in the language, but I definitely know that there are people that, you know, we don't charge them for, every time our code compliance officer has to go out to their property to tell them, you need to do this, this, and this, to get back in compliance, and they do it for a little bit, and then, once again, we're going out the next year and doing it over and over and over again. And then, as far as expanding the, to anybody with a business license, I, I think the focus should be first for businesses that have customers that come into the building in some way. I mean, if you're, if, if they have no, nobody but employees inside their business, I think it's up to them to keep, you know, the ADA access inside or non-barrier access inside their building up to par. At least if, I mean, it's just such, so few businesses could actually qualify, I would rather have, you know, the businesses with first priority, ones that serve the public in some way. And then my question is, what would the outreach to businesses look like? I'm sure not all of our businesses are watching Santee TV right now, so how do we plan to communicate this program?
I was actually going to reach out through a lot of the property management firms. Every single shopping center in Santee has a property management company, and they provide ongoing information to those tenants. And that, that is just a small portion of it. It would be through several partnerships with the very, the chamber, the, I mean, our two chambers, actually, both the East County Regional, for those that are members of that, and obviously our Santee Chamber. But through several different channels, reaching out to all of the, the businesses that we have, including flyers and using all the social media platforms that are available to us.
Okay. And if somebody had a business license in Santee, could they be running their business out of their home? Would we exclude residential entirely?
This business is, I mean, pardon me, actually, I should have Erin, I should have Erin answer this, but it is focused on commercial businesses, commercial or industrial businesses that have a storefront presence, not home-based businesses. And I've, in researching all these programs statewide, I have not encountered any program that encompassed a home-based business, because then you were dealing with residential construction and not commercial public access issues.
I think that's, I think that's a good approach to exclude residential home-based business, even though they have a business license in the city of Santee. I, I guess they do, do they? I mean, or do they just do it?
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to have a business license, that's correct.
Okay.
But I agree with you. I mean, I'm okay with, you know, the not, the no residential, you know, in there, but I do not think, of my opinion, that we should be excluding any other commercial or industrial buildings or, you know, you know, the customer-facing businesses.
Rob, did you have some?
Yeah, actually, I was going to bring that up, that, but oftentimes, I'm, home-based businesses are not, not required to be ADA compliant, they're home-based businesses. It's a, it's a business address, for most part. It's not a, it's not a customer-facing location. But one of the questions that was, or the comments that was made was that this is basically a, it's a reimbursement program. Is it possible for the applicant to get approved for this prior to getting an inspection done, so that they know that once they get the inspection done, they actually will get reimbursed for this? Because doing it after the fact, we're basically, you're, you're still, there's still a barrier of cost for the applicant to, to do this. So, I would prefer that we at least give them the ability to get pre-approved for it, then they can do the inspection and knowing that they will get reimbursed right away.
I, in all honesty, it is, it is our program, and we could provide for a pre-application sign-off, but not a full, in other words, you're pre-approved up to the.
Yeah, the $1,000, maximum of the $1,000.
And I do mean that it wouldn't, they would have to complete all the requirements up to that, and then also then submit the requisite documentation and, and receipt.
Yes, the staff will review the inspection results. They'll tell us which thing, like, in that report that they want to do, because they could have a list of things, and they may say, these are the top three things.
I'm referring to just the inspection alone.
Okay.
The actual report.
Oh, so you mean, you want them to be pre-approved to go do the inspection?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, not the work afterwards.
I get it, there could be a litany of items that are required to come into compliance, and they may say, sorry, that's just too much, not going to happen.
Yeah, but we give them the preapproval for that scope for the second phase, but I see what you're saying.
Talking about just to re, the, the preapproval for the reimbursement.
Phase one of it, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
I understand why we don't do it upfront. I was, talked about it, and it's, you know, all right, yeah, we give them the money, and then they don't do the inspection, and they just got a thousand bucks. Obviously, we don't want to incentivize that.
Yeah.
But we also would like to, the idea is to incentivize people to do these reports, know what's, what needs to be addressed, and then further address it. So, removing part of the, that barrier of cost would be, I think, benefit to our, our businesses in the city of Santee. Thank you, Pam, for bringing this forward and, and doing this. Erin, thank you very much for being a part of this and helping to put together this program. That would be the only adjustment, actually, one of the two adjustments I'd like to see made, that we give a, basically a preapproval for the inspection, and two, that it's all customer-facing businesses, not excluding, to exclude home-based businesses that we, that we do this program for, or that we open this program up to.
Wait, quick question, though, probably for Tari. Since this says initiate the Accessible Santee Small Business Grant Program, does it have to come back with us with the, for a resolution or anything? Or with any of the specific, you know, changes that were asked?
No, I think that you can move forward with your grant requirements and, and get the publication out and.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so.
I just do think it is important that if we have a, a business that is consistently in code violation, that they aren't part of it.
I think that's an easy language to modify, and I can work with Pam to help.
Okay.
We could look at, at passcode history to, to address that important point.
And do you want this to take place via a vote or a, okay. All right, then, do I have a motion to authorize?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it with the changes that I had voiced.
Yeah, I think that's going to come back. We're going to probably want to see that language also. All right, thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Pam, good job. Been a while. Item number 10 is a resolution amending the management services agreement of the city clerk and authorizing the appropriate funds for, to the operating budget. And Rita?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. The item brought forward tonight is in accordance with SB 1436, which requires an oral report on any executive compensation action. On October 9th, the city entered into an employment agreement with Mr. James Jeffries to serve as the city clerk, effective September 26, 2024. And on March 12, 2025, the, the city council conducted a public employee performance evaluation for Mr. Jeffries in accordance with California Government Code Section 54957. As a result of that performance evaluation, the city council directed staff to draft an amendment to modify the employment agreement to include a 9.5% salary adjustment or merit increase to increase Mr. Jeffries' annual salary to $126,000 per year, effective March 12, 2025. The proposed salary is within the salary band of the city of Santee's salary schedule, the adopted salary schedule. Staff recommends that the city council approve the, or adopt the resolution approving the First Amendment of the Employment Agreement for Mr. Jeffries. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, we don't have any speaker slips unless Brittany wants to come say something. And by the way, you don't get to check tonight if we approve this. So, questions, comments, council?
Well, we'll end up having to talk to Rita if we have comments.
I think our city clerk's done a great job in his first six months in service. We discussed when we hired him that we would have a reevaluation of that within six months. We brought it forward. We've, he's definitely stood up to everything that we've asked of him and more during some trying times during an election, and happy to approve, make the motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment first? Okay, then, let's please vote. And no, it's okay to say no.
Motion carries unanimously.
You knew you couldn't get by without any comment. All right, then, that takes us to non-agenda public comment. Any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any, let's go to city council reports. Ron, anything?
No, I'm fine with it.
Laura?
Yes, two items. Last, I think, I believe it was last week, the East County Chamber of Commerce put on their annual ethics in business, and this is where high school students from around Grossmont Union High School District meet with facilitators. And this year, it was at El Cajon Valley High School, and they, they come in and we do a day of ethics training. I, I really enjoy participating in this event, event as a facilitator, and just, you know, want to rest assured, everybody, we have great kids out in the community, and they have great ethics. So, we had some very interesting conversations. The other big meeting actually happened yesterday, and this is related to the 7.5 million dollar FEMA grant. We had, city of Santee, so we had, actually Harley was there, Deputy Chief Wallace was there, representing the fire department. We had several other departments from the city of Santee, a couple of representatives from Senate Minority Leader Brian Jones' office, county supervisor, representative from county supervisor Joel Anderson's office. We had representatives from the CHP, from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, CalFire, Padre Dam Municipal Water District, and Caltrans, which that alone was a feat to get all those agencies into a room. And basically, what we wanted to talk about was the progress so far that the city has made working on the grant and, and moving that process forward. I, my understanding is that we have put out an offer to a project manager to manage this process, and I believe they're in background check. Rita could confirm? And.
Everything cleared already.
That's great news. So, everything cleared? Great. And they accepted?
Yes.
Fabulous. Oh, when?
Next Thursday.
Fabulous, so they, they start next Thursday? And then, and Sandy has been working on the request for qualifications for the construction firm, I believe.
I need an environmental.
Yep, and that went out, I believe, two weeks ago.
Correct. Their qualifications are due back for 10.
So, due back April 10th. And having all those agencies in the room, we explained where we are in the process, what, we wanted to basically establish relationships, so we would have someone to call and, and help move this process along. There were some ideas that were expressed yesterday about how, for instance, California Fish and Wildlife could work on something subsequently as we were working on our processes here. So, really, the, the whole goal of this is just lessen the time for the clearing of the San Diego River Bottom. And I think we made a good step forward yesterday with that meeting.
Ron, you had something?
I'm going to bring up something Marlene was probably going to bring up, too. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the Grossmont Hospital Neuroscience Center. I'll get yelled at if I don't mention this, my wife will yell at me. And so, it would be, the ribbon cutting would be tomorrow. They're actually having an open house on Saturday from 10 to 2, I think it is. And if you want to, we were able to go last night and look at it. They had a, an event last night where we went and looked at it. It's for brain injuries and, and other problems that would deal with neuroscience. It's just a beautiful place. It was, it's really going to be well done. It'll help out, help out the East County. They also, we attended the transfer of care, which is where we try and get the hospital to take people in, off the ambulance is a little quicker. We, we had our Santee firefighters there along with us. And Grossmont made a comment that surprised me. They had three days last year where they had 400 patients a day coming into Grossmont Hospital. That's how bad it's getting there.
Well, thanks for the good news.
Go report, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the Santee VFW Auxiliary 93/27 is applying for a grant from Joel Anderson's office. And if you guys could write any letter of support, they would, you did, thank you. They'd really appreciate that. They're trying to get them out by Friday, so they really want tomorrow if possible, but that would be great to write a letter in support of all the stuff that the Santee VFW does for the city of Santee and our veterans.
Great. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, I just want to remind everybody, Christine Costa brought it up from Waste Management. We do have a cleanup, shred, and donation event that's happening on Saturday, April 5th, here at City Hall in the morning. It runs from 8 to 12, and as noted earlier, for the first time ever, goodwill is going to be there to help grab some of the goodies before we throw them in the trash can. So, that's a plus. Also, I'm going to just flash up this little sheet of paper. Our Community Services Department is doing a playground survey for looking at future playgrounds here in the city of Santee to look at what people want, what would they like to. Santee, to look at what people want, what would they like to see, not that we're going to rush out and fund them right now, I want to make sure people understand that, but if we're going to plan something, it's nice to be able to plan what the community wants. So, the survey is available, you can pick up a flyer and do it through a QR code, or you can do it off of the city's website. So, we encourage people to give us your comments. That's all I have tonight, sir.
More pickleball? More pickleball. You know, that's, yeah, it's crazy, I got a buddy that plays pickleball, and he's going on vacation, he's going on a cruise ship, and he's taking all of his pickleball stuff. I said, well, you don't have to pay all that money to go on a ship to play pickleball, it just, I don't get it. So...
You know what you should try to do is ride your bike and play pickleball.
I have a hard enough time just riding the bike and standing up.
That's kind of why I brought it up.
Thanks. Next, Tyree?
No report, but thank you for letting me sit in for Mr. Haggerty tonight.
Thanks. And James, do you have something to play for us?
I do have a video that we can play for you, yes.
All right, we're going to promote the anniversary for Mary's Donuts. Everybody's familiar with them, I think.
...has been the place to gather, connect, and smile. Now it's time to celebrate Mary Hennessy, the woman behind it all. Join us Saturday, March 29th, from 8:00 AM to noon, for live music by Blues 145, giveaways, and store specials, there's always something special at Mary's. Mary will be there, showing her love for the community that supported her all these years.
I like people.
Come share a donut, a story, and let local legend Mary Hennessy know how much you appreciate her at the 40th Anniversary Celebration of Mary's Donuts in Santee. We can't wait to see you there.
Anybody ever hear of Mary Donuts? Anybody? So, you might want to make it out there, because that day, all morning long, it's the diabetic, you know, free stuff, so there's no sugar, there's no fat, there's none of that stuff that's going to hurt you, so you might want to go out Saturday morning and show your support. And if you don't, then, well, I'm sorry, you missed out a fun opportunity. I know I'll be there, so. All right, that concludes our regular meeting, we're going to go into closed session for item number 11, which is conference with labor negotiators. Thanks, everybody. You can stick around if you want for us to come back out, but you never know how long we'll be in there.